The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Welcome to our town council meeting. Today is Thursday, March 9th, 7:00 PM. If you'll please stand for the pledge, I'll have councilwoman Tompkins lead us.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening we have a special presentation regarding a project that has been worked on for the past several weeks and it has to do with recognition of our Gold Star mothers and families in the town of Plainville. Robert, would you like to lead it off and then you can introduce whomever? Do we have folks that may come up and give us a little information about it or will you do that?
Last fall was contacted by Mr. Bob Doolittle about a project that he was thinking of donating to the community, dealing with Gold Star families and mothers, specifically Gold Star mothers at the time, and I guess we got a little bit of education about it as we went forward. And brought this to the council several months ago. The council felt that because the proposed memorial was planned for Veterans Memorial Park, that it might make sense to, at least that's where it was proposed to go, that it makes sense to get a few more people involved. And so council put together a group of volunteers. Have met a couple of times and I think this evening we're prepared to, they are prepared to participate in both of the meetings as well, to bring forth a recommendation with regards to how the memorial would look and a location. So what I'd like to do is ask Mr. Doolittle to step forward and Dave Burgess as well to, you know, maybe to just give a little bit more explanation. We've had some fundraising efforts to date and I know the council has a, or should have a summary of the donations that have been made to date from various groups, not, and various organizations, various individuals, not necessarily from Plainville, from all around this, you know, central Connecticut area. The total to date is $3,575. And I know that Mr. Doolittle made a donation to start in order to, you know, put a down payment down on the memorial as well. So I guess, I don't know. Bob, you want to step forward and Dave? I know you came to a council meeting a while ago, but you know, just kind of summarize everything and you know what the plans are for between now and Memorial Day.
All right. Well, first of all, actually, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Lee. I do know a couple of people that gave donations and I talked with them recently and they read me your thank you letter to them and they said it was fantastic. I believe that you should give credit where credit is due and they all loved the response. I know that at the meeting that we had the 28th, you said your secretary and others helped you, but I'm giving it to you and you can thank them. But you might as well hear it, you know, and let everybody else hear it too. It was really good. On the committee, we sat down at very first meeting, which was, I think, December 15th. I'm not positive by that. And we had quite a few. We had the VFW American Legion, we had Mr. Lee, three town councils, we had Cheryl Vog from Congresswoman Estes' office, she's a veterans rep, Danny and myself. I think I got, oh, and the Parks Department was there the first time. There was one already made up, not like this, it has changed, question and answers and everything else, and we went back to the drawing board. It came out and then I got a letter from Mrs. Peyton of Plainville. I don't know her age, but I'd say she's up there a while, a bit. Her brother, who was older, joined the Air Force and he was in, I don't know exactly when he went in, but apparently that he had orders to go to Europe to fight and they were waiting, his squadron was waiting for an aircraft carrier to carry him to Plains over, doing maneuvers and stuff. He crashed and died. That changed everything again. I got a letter from her and a check which I turned over, that her mother was a Gold Star mother and everything that we had talked about at the committee before sort of got thrown out the window because it wasn't accurate. Went back to the drawing board, got a friend of mine, because I, computers hate me, they hate me. We found a charter, Gold Star Mothers Charter, Washington DC, and they had changed the language on it to get in. And that's where you see this one now. I like it. We brought it to the committee on the 28th of this last month, laid it on the table, just like it is. Everybody looked at it. We only had two changes, which I accepted because I was stuck on it and I didn't know where to go. Somebody looked at it and changed it right away, made a suggestion, and everybody fell in love with it. We all signed it that we're there. It has been, we're going through everlasting memorials of Mr. Dave Doobie and he has it with all of the signatures on it and approved and that is ordered. From the original one, we added all the services. We tried for six the first time, one was cut off. Mrs. Estes got information that put the sixth one back on, which happens to be Merchant Marines. How we doing Danny?
You haven't fallen over yet?
Give it time, give it time. Now donations, I understand, I don't have anything to do with them as such. Mr. Lee takes care of that, he keeps us well informed. I think we're doing good money wise. We only have one outstanding that we don't really have a figure on yet, so that's on the iffy side of it. But I think even with that, no matter what it comes in, I think we're going to be fine. Any amount of money that is left over will stay in, from what I understand, Veterans Memorial Park. It'll be for enhancing the place, whatever else that is a good idea. Nothing is coming back to us or this town or anything else except for Veterans Memorial That's about all I got. Oh, I do have one other thing. It's been bugging me for quite a while and probably I shouldn't say it, but one of the papers, New Britain Herald, I don't know if he's here or not, called me the first time around, I've been in the article twice. I told Mr. Lee it and I didn't really like it. He only asked me a couple of questions and then he wrote his article and then he repeated one with the same thing in it, probably about three weeks to a month later. I was in the service, Air Force, 1967 to 1971. My permanent party base was Elmendorf Air Force Base, Anchorage, Alaska. He has me down as a Vietnam veteran. I'm sorry, but I never went there and I never said I did. I don't want any confusion over that. That's it. Any question for us? Danny, you answer questions if you got them. Give them a bunch of questions, please.
Well, first I'd like to just say thank you to both of you gentlemen for taking this project on and really paying attention to the detail that had to get done so that this is exactly the way everybody thought this should be to honor those service people. I know that you were back and forth with the person that's going to be creating this stone and you wanted it to be perfect and I think you achieved your goal and I really appreciate all of your time and energy and your focus on this project. You were determined and we're excited that this is going to happen.
I still yell at my brother-in-law for having me come out there and visit him. The whole idea came from Arizona.
You'll have to invite him when we have this unveiling so that he can be there.
He's coming a month after.
Oh gee. Well, many thanks.
I'm taking him there to show it to him.
You should. Many thanks to both of you for your persistence and you were, you're determined and dedicated to this project and that's why it's going to be coming out as well as it is. So thank you so much and if anybody has questions for the gentleman, Robert?
I just wanted to do a couple of things. One is that the plan is that the Gold Star Memorial would be, I guess, dedicated on Memorial Day and the Gold Star Committee is working with the Memorial Day Parade Committee to try to coordinate the efforts as far as that's concerned. The location would be at Veterans Park, near the sidewalk between the Recreation Building and going towards Maple Street. There's an open area there, so kind of centered in that direction, facing towards the road. I'd like, for those of you who may not be able to see it or read it, the Gold Star Memorial has a star in the middle and it has mothers and family and it reads, "Dedicated to all families who suffered the loss of a loved one who gave their life in the line of duty for the United States. We feel your pain and we honor your sacrifice and patriotism to help keep America free." And below that would be the medallions that will be put into the memorial that would represent the six service organizations that are recognized by the Gold Star Committee Organization. So I think everything's coming together and it should be something that will enhance and I know that enhanced the park and I know that other communities who've learned about our efforts are now talking about trying to do something perhaps similar going forward. Our intention is to invite all of the Gold Star mothers and, you know, families that we are aware of. They had a dedication in Middletown several months ago and they developed a list.
Actually, a couple of years ago.
It was a couple of years ago with the trees?
With the trees, yes.
Okay. And I'm going to use that list and some other resources that may be available and invite them to attend as well. So hopefully it'll be a nice event and we can work things out with the Memorial Day Parade Committee.
Any comments or questions?
Madam Chair, I think, and I'm sure the Historical Society would be helpful in identifying some of that as well. They did, were able to for the Civil War, for example, identify the people that lived geographically in Plainville. Of course, we were totally part of Farmington at that point, but I assume that they could provide assistance in identifying families too.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Firstly, I'd like to have Mrs. Peyton get a letter from maybe Mr. Lee or whatever inviting her down.
Sure.
She's the one that turned this thing all over. I mean, I had a lot of information on Gold Star, but I did not have the charter and she never mentioned the charter, but I gotta go back and find this out. And I mean, it's her basically why it's changed the way it is now. I know her mother was a Gold Star. And by the old rules, you weren't because you weren't killed over inaction.
Yep.
The new rules changed too, in the line of duty.
Mm-hmm.
It'd be nice to see her here.
That'd be great.
You know, when we have it.
Yep. Well, thanks again and also if I can just add one more word of thanks to all those folks that have donated to this project. We have a list and I won't read it because I'm not sure everybody wants to have their name publicized, but there are a number of people from Plainville, organizations from Plainville, individuals, there's folks from out of Plainville that have donated to this project and we sincerely appreciate the interest that you have generated in it and the fact that they gave very willingly to help get this done. So thanks to all of those who contributed to this. We appreciate that.
Thank you for your time and all your help.
Thank you so much.
A great evening.
Thank you. Just take a brief recess and get set up?
Oh, yes. We'll take a brief recess to get set up for the budget presentation.
Actually, the Gold Star.
We'll now begin, prior to our public hearing, town manager Robert Lee is going to do a brief presentation regarding our proposed budget for next year.
Yes, and Dr. Maureen Brummett will assist as well.
Yep.
We're going to, although this is a public hearing, we just wanted to give a brief overview of the budget. There are copies of the budget up front, proposed budget, as well as the, I think there are some copies of the slides around as well. If not, you can grab them, make copies on them before you leave. Under the Plainville Town Charter, the town manager is responsible to recommend the budget to the town council at the beginning of March and under the same charter, we're required to have a public hearing on the town manager's recommended budget and as such, that's the purpose of this evening's meeting and public hearing. As proposed, the total budget would be an increase of $857,000 or a 1.49% increase. You may have read that the governor is proposing that towns contribute to the teachers' pension fund, which has been managed and operated by the state of Connecticut since 1939. And if that comes forward and there is a big if at this point in time, that would increase our spending by almost one, an additional $1.9 million and bring spending up to approximately $2.8 million or a 4.83% increase. At this point in time, I am recommending that the council, as they review this budget, review it with the state teachers' retirement put to the side and hopefully we'll find out which direction they may be going between now and by the time you have to make some decisions. Our budget is split into four major categories, that being the Board of Education, operating, town government, debt service and capital projects. As recommended, the Board of Education budget is an increase of $678,000 of 1.95%. Town government recommendation is basically $179,000 or just a little bit over 1% and that's how we get the 1.49%. And you can see the state teachers' retirement dollar amount that's being recommended that Plainville can pay under the governor's proposed budget. To give you some perspective on budget, at least the expenditure increases over the last seven years, you can see the blue bars represent from 2012 fiscal year, 2012 to fiscal year 2017. And you can see with the 1.49%, you know, it's pretty much in line with the modest budget increases that we've been experiencing since 2012. And you can see how it would look like if the teachers' retirement was added to that as well. Our direct revenue changes, what we're seeing is various categories here. As we're projecting right now, those line items would result in, or those estimates would result in a little bit less than $75,000 reduction from what we have in the budget for the current fiscal year. So not only are expenditures going up by 1.49%, but we have some revenues that are decreasing slightly as well. General government expenditures, we have several categories here. The general government increase is basically some shifting of some personnel from the Public Works Department towards general government. Overall, you can see where there's some increases in general government, public safety, civic and cultural, and employee fringe benefits, and we have reductions in public works, health and human services, and other items, what we call sundries and transfers out. The major drivers of the town general government budget increase is not surprisingly payroll, employee benefits, liability insurance. We have some reductions in utility costs. Those four items represent $208,000. You may remember that our increase is $179,000, which means that all the other line items in the budget represent actually a, almost a little bit more than a $29,000 decrease. But those, these are the major drivers of the budget. I'd like to turn the microphone over to Dr. Brummett and she can review the Board of Education. I know she cut out a number of slides this evening, so.
Good evening. Before I begin, I just want to reiterate what I did the other night is my effort with the Board of Eds to strenuously object to the governor's budget. As I mentioned a few nights ago, I testified at the Capitol a few weeks back. I've had held meetings here with our representatives and Senator Henry Martin, Representative Pettit. The Board of Ed and I went to the Capitol the other day to voice our support for public education and that it should be funded appropriately. And today I attended a meeting with Lieutenant Governor Wyman and again, myself and colleagues voiced our strong objections to the budget. She did acknowledge that the budget is something that was put out there as a starting point, a conversational starting point. There's a lot of chatter that this teachers' retirement will not come to fruition. There's talk of a bond at the state level. There's also talk that ECS funding won't change for next year because that's actually a stable pot of money and they're just reallocating it differently. They didn't actually reduce it, but they're certainly parcelling it out differently. So I just wanted to bring that up as, to show the public that what we've been shown from the state is just unacceptable and we'll continue to do what we can to put forward, to voice our concern about what's a very irresponsible budget for education. The school district recently went through a strategic planning process and as such, we modified our vision. We now are inspiring and preparing lifelong learners to follow their passion, engage in their communities and positively impact our global society. It's based on three core values that we've held for many years. Students, teaching and learning, that's what we're all about, that's why we go to work every day. And on that document is everything that we value for the next five years and anything you see in our budget directly relates to the values listed on that document, which I'll review briefly as I go through my comments. As Mr. Lee said, we've had very low budget increases on the Board of Ed side, similar to the town, over the past six years. And this year, as many folks know, we took an ECS cut mid-year, so what was supposed to be a 1.33 budget increase this year actually went down to a 1.04. I wanted to point out to the community that though many communities are experiencing a significant decrease in their student enrollment, the red arrow is showing you what we anticipate for next year of 2,371 students, which is up slightly from this year. Most of that will likely be from our preschool population as we expand that program. However, we're expanding it by charging some parent fees, not by impacting this budget. As we look to develop our budget this year, we knew that it would be a difficult year, so we really dug deep and analyzed 135 areas of activity, collaborated with our administrators. We told them right out of the gate that there would not be any new positions this year and that they should really analyze their supply lines and other lines that might be able to be reduced. We looked at our personnel and we have made some reductions there, which I'll detail in a moment. And we certainly didn't go into this saying, let's just keep what we had last year and move forward. We basically put forth what we really need to run the district and keep it at comparable services as we have right now. We certainly looked at our activities, our forecasting of costs of things, and certainly looked for potential savings. And we spent a lot of time collaborating with the town. Mr. Lee, Mr. Buden, myself, Mr. LePage and Mr. Adlerstein really spent time talking about how this was all unfolding and how we could work together to put forward a really responsible budget. So this is what would have happened if we kind of left everything as is. These are strictly contractual increases, which are part of our union obligations and based on those, we would have had, coming out of the gate this year, a 3.11% increase and that's simply because of our salary obligations, our health insurance and our transportation contract with DATCO. That would have led us to a 3.11% increase. I do want to draw your attention to health insurance. That has gone up a lot this year from kind of a negative amount last year, up 6%, which is essentially a 300% plus increase. And that has to do with the fact that our folks that work with us on our insurance said we probably needed to get a little bit of an increase in there after some lower increases over the years. So that is a pretty large driver for us this year in our budget. So after some deliberations among the administrators and then onward to the Board of Education over several evenings, we cut as best we could out of this budget to bring it down to a 1.95% increase. What that looks like is mostly salaries and benefits. As you can see, the top two items there represent the percentage of the budget that is being driven by those items. Over 66% of our budget is salaries and over 16% of it is benefits. So those were large. We also had an increase in professional services. Last year, our budget did not include legal fees. They were able to be prepaid. This year, we have to include them. And we also have interns that we use to help bring down our use of subs. So those are our cost savings, but you have to put the money up front on that. Our transportation cost was another large driver. And our equipment costs went down slightly because some of our technology was moved to our capital budget. And we did do a lot of reducing in supplies. The items in the red represent those items that we did, our very last cut to the budget that got us to 1.95 was largely due to those cuts in property services, repairs, utilities, looking at those budgets and maybe analyzing that our estimates were a little high and some equipment that we're not going to buy. So contractual increases that would have caused us to have a 3.11% increase have now been reduced to a 1.95% increase and largely through staffing reductions. These are the reductions that we've made heading into next school year. We've reduced a PE teacher at the high school. Luckily, we had a PE teacher leave one position and go to an athletic director position, so next year, we're not replacing that PE position. We had a college and career non-certified position that was a one-year that will not be renewed. We had to eliminate a tutor that was funded by grant money because the grant was cut. And we're adding a minimal amount of ESL tutoring to meet the needs of our very diverse community. And we eliminated an office professional. It became vacant in July and we decided not to fill it this year and we're not going to fill it next year. At the Middle School of Plainville, we reduced a social studies teacher. We have someone retiring. We're not going to replace her. We're going to also add a little ESL, or English as a Second Language tutoring support. Our community has about a 5% ESL population and it's a very diverse number of languages and we're feeling that both our middle and high school are needing some services in that regard. Our elementary schools are not anticipated to have any staffing changes at this time. This is our capital improvement plan that we recommended to the town council. The items in black represent our initial proposal and then as we got to bringing this total down considerably, we prioritized the items in the red. Very quickly, we have some cleaning equipment items that we try to just replace on an annual basis. We have some security upgrades that we need to make in our cameras and such to make our schools as secure as possible. We have a tech ed hallway that we'd like to develop a partition for because when the automotive shop runs some cars, the fumes come into the school and sometimes create a health hazard. We also need to install some handicap accessible doors in anticipation of a student who's transitioning to the high school next year. And our middle school has a fire annunciation system that needs to be repaired. It's getting near the end of its useful life and we want to make sure that that's in top working condition. The rest of the items in our capital budget have to do with our technology infrastructure. We work very closely with the town on our technology and our, some of our technicians work closely with the town on their items, so some of this is collaborative in nature. Most of it, however, is our Chromebook initiative. We have to make sure we replace a certain amount every year so that they're all in working order. We do want to extend them down to third grade next year because our kids have to take a state test on a computer and if they don't have that, then we're spending weeks upon end rotating kids through labs or classroom labs and it just is not a good use of their instructional time. And the rest of those expenses have to do with infrastructure like servers, core switches, which help the high school have better connectivity, and some administrative laptops that are five to six years old and are likely to not make another year of useful life. And on the next page is simply the grand total, it's about $387,000 and again, that's largely technology and safety and security issues. I think it's important for our folks to see what we're trying to accomplish, mostly through reallocation. As you can see in my proposal, there's no really new positions or expansions of anything, but we want to add, expand our preschool program to be a full week. Right now, it's Tuesday through Friday. However, that would be done through charging parents some nominal fees. We are going to revise our teacher evaluation plan, which won't cost any money, but it'll give our teachers better feedback. We are going to expand our English as a Second Language services. We're going to create a STEM lab at the middle school, but that will be done through an endowment fund, not through Board of Ed. endowment fund, not through Board of Ed monies. We want to develop some programs for students at the high school and the middle school who are not doing well in the general environment but need some specialized instruction. Again, we're going to reallocate folks to do that. We're trying to maintain our after-school programs despite the loss of some grant money. We'll do that through some increased parent fees and some lower reimbursements to teachers. We'll do some curriculum writing. I already mentioned the Chromebooks. We want to make sure our technology infrastructure remains solid. It does expand townwide and I think it's important that the school system has really strong technology. We're going to expand our culturally responsive teaching practices. Again, that's through task forces and teacher work. No expenses there. We're going to redesign our website and increase our teacher and staff recognitions. I want the community to also know what we've done with the money that was invested in the Board of Education budget last year. Our technology infrastructure has been acknowledged by CAPS, the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, in a video where they report that we are a technology leader and we use it to transform our instruction. We want our expanded pre-K was started this year and will continue next year. Our smarter balance scores are in and actually, we just got a report card and all of our schools are doing very, very well. We have given our students access to credit bearing courses at the high school, so they're graduating with 400-plus college credits and saving their parents or themselves hundreds of thousands of dollars in tuition costs. We've expanded our professional learning community program where teachers are having extra half-days this year to make sure they're talking about teaching and learning and innovation. Our Veterans Day program has been very robust for years and continues to get positive accolades from our veterans in our community. And we have a model elementary wellness program where our students move throughout the day to increase their attention span. And here's some pictures of our technology in action. Those are some elementary kids using their Chromebooks. Those are our preschoolers enjoying their preschool, the big preschool ladies, me. Our digital devils and our MSP Vex Robotics is our students and they're preparing to be potential engineers down the road by working on a robotics program, which we just had a competition this past weekend and came in eighth place, which is excellent out of well over 50 teams. And so, we have a lab at the high school. We're going to get one at the middle school. This is pictures of our Veterans Day celebration this year, which gets a lot of media attention. And we had a beautiful flag flying at the middle school. We had numerous veterans from local and neighboring communities come to celebrate with us. Again, we, here's some more return on your investment this year for the community. We added a new MSP cross-country team. We also are now offering credit, high school credit for eighth graders taking Algebra I, Spanish, Italian, and French, provided they meet some rigorous standards. We run an excellent program at our middle and high school called Go Baby Go, where we, our students redesign motorized cars to make them accessible to students with disabilities. We have a unified sports team, which allows our students with disabilities to compete, you know, regionally. We had a nice competition yesterday, New Britain. I already mentioned our professional learning communities. We also developed this year a successful Plainville High co-op hockey team that the kids and their parents paid into, but has already done very well. And as I mentioned before, we just developed a five-year strategic plan. Here's our middle school track team doing very well. Here's our Go Baby Go in action. This is our unified sports team that has done beautifully. They'll be featured in a celebration on April 19th. Our co-op hockey team had a great season. And this is a really nice picture. This is a picture of our staff that we celebrated in the fall under Mr. Lapage's guidance, where we honored anyone who had 25 or more years' experience in the district. And as you can see, and that included all certified, non-certified staff, and you can see that it's a large group of folks, I think it's over 80, that have been with us a long time and we wanted to honor that. And this year, we began a program called Everyday Hero, where we honor folks, we ask for nominations and folks that go above and beyond to make our school district a better place. It's a no-cost program, but it's done a lot to make people feel valued and honored for all the work that they do. And that concludes my report.
Roughly speaking, the Board of Education budget makes up about 60% of the total expenditures. General government makes up approximately 30%, which leaves the remaining 10% to debt and capital projects. On our debt payments, total recommended expenditure is $4.7 million. This number has been held constant since fiscal year 15. And of that $4.7 million, 1.35 million is towards town government expenditures that went, that were borrowed over a period of time. A little bit over $3 million of that is towards school building projects. We have some miscellaneous costs in there and returned to the debt management fund is $230,000 proposed for fiscal year 2018. On our capital improvement plan, the recommended expenditure is $2.2 million. I would like to point out that 1 million of that 2.2 is related to Northwest Drive paving project, which we're receiving a $1 million grant for. So, it's basically a wash. The grant is coming from the state of Connecticut through Capital Region Council of Governments. But we have to have it in the budget in order to expend it. We have to have it appropriated. So, that's why it's in the capital improvement budget, proposing that the funds to support that $2.2 million recommendation, again, is the $1 million grant. $1.1 million from the general fund, which is the same amount that was appropriated in the current fiscal year. And I'm recommending to balance the expenditures off by, we use a small amount of unassigned fund balance of approximately $105,000. So many items on the capital improvement plan. On the spending side, you see the Northwest Drive paving project. We have the police dispatch communication equipment that was installed several years ago. Council decided that the best way to handle that was to pay it over five years. This is the fourth payment of five. We have a backhoe for the roadways department, replacing three police cruisers. It includes outfitting and as well as the rescue apparatus, which was purchased by the town for the fire department. Five years ago, the council decided at that point in time that they would pay for that particular rescue apparatus over a five-year period. And this is the fifth payment is due in fiscal year 18 and so, will be complete purchase of that vehicle as part of the fiscal year 18 budget. There's 18 other smaller requests totaling $327,000. This is on the general government side. Estimated, the average of each project would be about $18,000 apiece. You saw the capital improvement expenditures recommended through the Board of Education, so I didn't want to repeat those. So, getting down to the mill rate change, based upon the expenditures without the teachers' retirement, the current mill rate is 31.99. If the budget was approved as presented, it would result in a 0.69 mill increase or 2.17% increase in taxes. In the kind of the yellowish box, you can see what the potential impact would be if the teacher's retirement was included as, or was required to be included as part of the town's paying our portion of it. I would like to point out that I serve on the Council of Small Towns on the executive board. I was up in Hartford this morning as well at a press conference where the Council of Small Towns expressed our objection to this particular proposal. And I know that CCM is, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities is putting on the full court press as well. So, we'll see where that goes. I also attended the Finance Revenue and Bonding Committee meeting, at least a portion of it this morning as well. And there were additional people who were expressing concern about that as well. Our mill rate history since our last revaluation, you can see where we've had, you know, very small increases as far as the mill rate is concerned. Since last revow, this 2.17% recommendation is pretty much in the ballpark with what's been approved in the last five years. The average increase, including this year's budget, would be basically a 1.14% increase in taxes average over five years. And you can see what just that teacher's pension proposal would do to even the average and what it would do in comparison to what we've done in previous years. And I think we're seeing similar impacts in other communities as well. Some even, you know, significantly worse than Plainville, some, you know, a little bit better. But certainly, it's going to have a dramatic impact on most of the communities in the state. And, you know, based upon that, I don't think it is wise to, you know, overreact to what's been proposed to date at this point in time. I certainly think we need to keep it in the, in focus and pay attention to it. But, and, you know, but again, I wouldn't recommend that we overreact to it at this point in time. So, that's pretty much the budget summary in a nutshell. And with your permission, I'd like to take a seat and let you turn it over to the public hearing process.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Brummett, for your comments as well. We appreciate that. I would like to ask our town clerk to please read the notice of the public hearing for
In accordance with provisions of Chapter 7, Section 5 of the Charter of the Town of Plainville, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Plainville Town Council at 7:00 PM on Thursday, March 9, 2017, in the council chambers, municipal center, to hear public comments on the budget for the Town of Plainville for the fiscal year 2018 as proposed by the town manager.
Thank you. This time, I will open up the discussion for a public hearing. Please come to the microphone at the podium. I ask that you state your name and address. You'll be given one opportunity to speak to the council. Does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing?
George Fensick, to Pinecrest Drive. Just two questions. There's a possibility of some referendums coming up on some school projects. I would assume that is not, would not be reflected in this budget, but in future budgets? Is that correct?
No, it's not part of the budget.
If they were approved, it would not impact the fiscal year 18 budget, no.
But it would affect possible the future, the year after that, then?
Yes.
Second question. In reference to what Governor Malloy has suggested, if it comes out, when do we have to set up the mill rate in town? What's the date, our latest date?
We have to set it late May.
What if the General Assembly has not done anything with that and they approve it afterwards, let's say?
Well, and that's the dilemma that we'll face. You know, I can't give you the answer to that question. We just have to, if it happens, we'll have to make some type of arrangements.
My question, can the council redo the mill rate at that point? Or are you stuck? You can't do anything because you've already set it.
Well, there is.
What are our choices at that point, is what I'm asking?
Well, we don't have many choices. They're talking about enacting some legislation, which may give towns an opportunity to do that. And, you know, we'll advise the council as we get closer to that as to what might be the best way to approach that.
I think that's the biggest concern everybody has at this point.
As well, as well as us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Karen Makarowski, to Sunrise Terrace here in Plainville. I spoke at last year's budget hearing and with the same exact points that I'm going to make today. Last year, I spoke about how, I'm very disappointed in our town about how we don't have disability services for our residents. We focus on the seniors. We don't focus on the disability services. I shared with you that my sister, who had lived here for 16 years, had multiple sclerosis and had a relapse that left her permanently disabled. I suggested we consider Dallaraide Meals on Wheels, opening up the senior center for a few days, providing the same type of health services, and talk about what those costs might be and maybe do some fundraising. To this day, nothing has been done, but yet, the budget reflects that people outside of Plainville are using the senior center and paying a fee to do that. We didn't offer that service to our disabled. I think it's kind of sad that we don't take care of those people. Unfortunately, my sister lost the battle and I had to move her to another town where there were services. But I want to speak for those that don't have somebody to speak for them today. We need to consider making a change in our town. Last year, I spoke about the possibility of having contingency plan. What if the, there was a change in what the governor proposed as our funding for the town? What would happen? Contingency planning is something we do in budgeting. I'm a CFO for four organizations. If I didn't have a contingency plan for an external factor that may impact our budget, I wouldn't have a job. So, I asked, what were we planning on doing? The response from Mr. Lee was, nothing has ever been changed from what the governor proposed. In fact, the governor did make a change in what he had proposed and we simply raised taxes was what Mr. Lee's response was last year. I'm asking this year, where the governor's proposing some absolutely drastic changes by pushing the 30% or a third of the retirement funds for teachers to the towns. We need a contingency plan. We don't need to, we'll deal with it when it comes. It may be coming. So, we need to make a plan today and possibly have a budget vote that is ready to go should that change be made, so we can talk about what our taxes might look like and how we might afford them as a town. The other problem with the increase in the retirement coming to the towns is that the following year, the governor has said that there is an increase from 400 and I think it was 7 million to 420 million dollars. So, we will see another tax hike and this will only continue to perpetuate and will cause, I believe, many people to sell their houses and move out of the town. So, we need to figure out a plan today. And the Center for Retirement Research at Boston College projected the contribution would top $6.2 billion by 2032. So, this is, this is something we need to take action on. I reviewed the budget in detail at the library. Last year, I asked if that detailed budget could be provided online before this meeting so that more residents had a chance to really be educated about what was happening through the line items. I appreciate the summary budget, but as a CFO, I know what to put in summary and I need to be able to look at the detail and I think the residents should have that same chance. The summary budget is up online and I do appreciate Mr. Lee's executive assistant took the time when I called her to do that. The budget does not propose any new revenue amounts. I know it's difficult as a town, what do we have to serve? We don't really have any products that we can sell. But I like to remind us that we bought an airport about five years ago, maybe even longer now. And instead of leveraging the airport and bringing that into our town and figuring out how we might run that airport to benefit the town, we simply turned it over to a management company that had been doing it for 30 years. While they've been doing it for 30 years, they found out where the revenue streams are and where the profits might be. I was a CFO at a civilian airport up in Massachusetts for several years and we found a way to be successful running it as a nonprofit. And I suggest we consider looking at what are we doing with our airport? The fact that we have no new revenues and we have increased expenses, we also have a 2% increase in salaries for the town, but yet, we have no contingency and how do we handle that? If we continue to do the increases, again, we're looking to the towns for that support. I know several years ago, we implemented a tax break for businesses, which was great because we were able to build our business community. And I asked last year, if we didn't get an answer, have we still continued the 10-year tax break for corporations? Or have we decreased that break, allowing them to balance the budget, not on the backs of residents, but to share it with those of corporations? And if we haven't, then I'd like for us to reevaluate that in the coming years. Especially our small businesses, those organizations really do deserve the break. They're getting up and running. Small businesses are the back of our humanity across the US, but the larger corporations have had a great stay in our town. Line 201 of the expenditures relates to police staffing, which is about $4 million. There was an overage of $250,000 this year in overtime. The same, about equal to that was also last year. But yet, this year's plan doesn't show an increase, a significant increase to a lot for that overtime. So, I question our police staffing. We're able to provide five new police officers. We have a staff of 37. I commend what they do. I appreciate when they're there for us. I only ask, what is our evaluation on how many is too many? How, or is it not enough because we have all of these overtime services? I think we need to take a hard look at that if we're having overages of $250,000 a year. It's a major line item. The fringe benefit rate for the town government is about 42%, which is 19% of it is health insurance. And I understand the health insurance market. But if you look at the Board of Education, it's 24.5%. We need to start thinking about some drastic changes in business and in the nonprofit community. We do more with less. We make the hard cuts. We reduce our size of government, our size of businesses. And it's difficult looking at each line item. This is a $50 million-plus budget for our town, for a small town. And we need to actually take a strategic look and to see what we can change because if we continue on the same path, we're going to have people moving out of this town that cannot afford it. The last item I have to say, and I thank you for your time, is that I did read in the paper that Mr. Lee was going to be meeting with Valley Water about our water supply. And I just wanted to reiterate that our water is one of the worst around here. And it ruins our appliances, it ruins our showers, it hurts our health. And it is time for us to take act- to take action on it, but I don't see anything in the budget to allow us for taking any action. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on the public hearing? Mr. Frangos. Go ahead.
Lou Frangos, Tenfer Bank Street. There are two points I would like to present. First, I have no complaints about the Town of Plainville's proposed budget. I believe this budget, like others in the past years, has been well thought out, and I am sure that with the upcoming budget work sessions, it will be pruned down to the best it can be to lessen the tax burden on the residents and yet provide the necessary services to keep the town running efficiently. However, I would like to say that I do find it disappointing that the governor of the state of Connecticut, instead of rewarding towns such as Plainville for their budget efficiency, choose to attempt to add increased tax burdens to them. Secondly, the concern I do have is that there is a large-dollar project looming in Plainville's future, specifically the Wheeler School Project. I am hoping the town council will, if any additional taxes are levied or state funding is decreased, the town will temporarily cancel said project or at least scale it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council on the public hearing? Yes, sir.
Stephen DBS, 7 Bel Air Drive. At first, I'd like to thank Mr. Frangos for his comments. While I don't agree with everything that he said, no one in this room wants to speak after a CFO. So thank you for that. I will begin by speaking to the education budget as that is the largest part of our expenditures and often the topic of discussion for those seeking to make cuts. I would first like to thank Dr. Brummett, her staff, and those Board of Ed members who support our schools for putting forward a very fair and transparent budget. This budget seems to be crafted in good faith and contains a bare minimum to keep our town moving forward. After viewing the budget, it seems everything left in it is necessary to keep up with, among other things, state and federal mandates, inflation, contract obligations, and loss of state grants. Additional cuts would include those to our youngest, neediest children and only begin to take away from the progress that we have made. I imagine that crafting a budget with an increase this small that does not sacrifice essential services is a very difficult task, and failure to do so would be the beginning of a hole that future budgets would be responsible for digging us out of. Dr. Brummett, our school community have gotten very creative in saving money while still finding a way to, among other initiatives, maintain after-school programs and programs for at-risk students and to increase S-Back and SAT scores. While programs and scores like this may be meaningless to some people in this room, please understand that investing in our public education is perhaps the best economic development tool a town can have. Any real estate agent will be happy to tell you about the correlation between the quality of a school system and the value of homes in that school system. Parents and children are very aware of what we are accomplishing in Plainville. That being said, well-funded magnet and charter schools try to recruit our best students with well-equipped, modern schools with low teacher-to-student ratios. Plainville schools pay tuition for those students who leave. Our students stay because we fund technology, we fund robotics programs, we fund gifted programs, and we keep our student-to-teaching ratio where it is. If we do not, these students will find someone who will, and they'll send us the bill. Further, mill rates are easy to criticize when viewed as independent numbers. Keep in mind, though, when you drive down our mill rate by underfunding schools, leaving facilities in disrepair, and cutting services in town, ask yourself what the end result is. Leave your town in such a state, and businesses are not drawn here, families will not settle here, consumers will not spend their money here, your tax revenues slip away, and you have no choice but to then raise your mill rates in hopes of relying on only those that remain. I think in this town, we have to look forward. We have three choices when it comes to progress. We could be ahead of the curve, we can keep up with the progress, or we could look the other way and spend the coming years figuring out how we're going to catch up. We have amazing schools, dedicated teachers, high-achieving students, working hard every day. I will be the first one to admit, education costs money. No one will disagree, but there's no doubt short-sightedness costs more money. I ask that we move to approve the budget as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kathy Prolegis, and I'm on Whiting Street. I'm representing the library. It's a wonderful place. The library assists us in a wide variety of needs and researching recipes, ingredients, to help knowing what phone numbers to call for benefits. The reference staff is always very helpful, Doug, Tim, and Carrie, and I'm just here to support them.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the budget? Yes, sir.
Ena Prolegis, 16 Whiting Street. I'd like to say from the deep resources of my soul that the services that the Plainville Library has assisted me with for my needs have been invaluable, and a few of them I wrote down, just periodicals, historical writings, computer and internet, phone numbers directory, health insurance information, social services and benefits, photocopy and fax machine, bus schedule and MapQuest, children's department for grandchildren, free DVDs rental, and I don't know if I left anything out. And I thank the staff there very much, very helpful, Doug, Timothy, and Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Amy Hillebrook, and I'm here tonight to sing the praises of the Plainville Public Library. Even though the reasons that I will now list are not in alphabetical order, I want you to know that I visit the Plainville Public Library often to take out books, movies, use the internet, relax in beautiful surroundings, listen to music, assist my daughter with her homework, attend special programs, and most importantly, get help and information from the finest, most caring, and warm staff members that I have the pleasure to know. Plainville is indeed fortunate to have such a rich and wonderful resource at its fingertips, and thank you for being such a fantastic and enriching community venue for me.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Yes, ma'am.
Catherine Humey, 31 and 1/2 Roosevelt Street. I'm here in support of the Plainville Library. As you know, the Plainville Library always has programs for adults and children that are very educational, and I use the library multiple times a week for computers and printing. The library is open to new ideas and bringing in new educational programming that is focused on personal health and the health of our community. The adult reference staff is particularly helpful when I need information or assistance with technology. So I just wanted to be here for support of the library and want to show that it's a vital town resource. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? Oh, yes, sir.
Good evening. Pete Krizniewski, 30 Shuttamon Road. I've talked in the past before. I know I might have a tendency to ramble on, so I tried to write down a few things this year. Although I didn't drill down every line item, I've been out of accounting for like 10 years now, so teaching, a lot of practice, but I did focus on the education side of being an educator now and recognizing that is the largest part of our budget. The proposed school budget of 1.95% increase is certainly in line with many neighboring districts. If you've been reading the paper, Soullington, Newmington, Berlin, all have asked for a higher percentage. Other cities such as Meriden and Bristol haven't finalized, or at least I couldn't in my research last week, seeing what their percentages were. I think New Brent was a little bit lower. And for all this, we're not just treading water. A lot of the great programs that Dr. Brummett has mentioned, such as the after-school program and the half-day program and PD days and the full K, full pre-K, five-day-week programs, are certainly testament to what we get, our bang for our buck. I know, you know, things are never quite as good or quite as bad as what people make them out to be. And certainly, you know, the last seven, eight, nine years have been a little bit rougher, and, you know, the national, or at least the Connecticut unemployment rate in 2010 was like 9.2% from what I was able to find, and currently now it sits at 4.4%, less than half. So, you know, basically, it hasn't been this low. There's been one year in the last 15 years where the unemployment rate's been this low. So in essence, there's a lot more positives, I think, than negatives, and the sky isn't necessarily falling where we need to, you know, slash all spending. The Board of Ed seems to be embracing this with their zero-based budgeting policy, looking at what they need and finding the funds for it versus just taking what you did last year and adding to it. It's a much more fiscally responsible way to do things, and so I think in one of the slides that there's set to be $100,000 under budget for this year, recognizing when, you know, cost-sharing grants and stuff are cut. I know bonding for massive future projects is a separate issue that will be coming up on referendum, I think, end of April or something I was reading about, but it's always worth mentioning and thinking about because the debt service that goes there is part of our annual budgets and paying off those things that we do bond. Obviously, the reality is that municipality is just like, people don't operate on cash, and, you know, we have to borrow on credit. If we could simply just wait and save up our money to pay for things in cash, we would never get anything done or any large projects that will benefit many. Obviously, the fiscal and financial health of our town is pretty, I think, secure, reflected on the improved bond rating of, I think, last year, a couple of years ago, which enabled us to refinance some amounts and save some much-needed money along the way. And if you look at our capital expenditures budget of, you know, once again, I didn't see the drill down, but more the big simplified version of the 2.2 million, 1 million of it being already through the paving grant, there's not a lot of fluff in there. It doesn't seem any large unnecessary costs. I mean, simple things like the rescue equipment and/or the police cars are in there, and then other line items, about a quarter of a million dollars are things that we've already agreed for four or five years ago that will be falling off the books in the near future. So the remaining amount in there, the $1 million we want to spend, it looks like we have some room to get those things accomplished if we keep them in. I believe the budget is a good example of fiscal responsibility. It doesn't seem to force a very large tax increase, provided that the governor's budget doesn't go through, as we're all hoping, and continuing many services that all groups and our citizens in this town enjoy, from our clean, safe Norton Park, which my kids and I enjoyed the new playground equipment there when the snow finally melted, to our, you know, updated and program-filled library, which we also go to every couple of weeks and pay our late fees, vibrant and active senior center, safe and beautiful schools. We have a lot of anemones that our town leaders and reps fought hard to get, and we should, you know, try to maintain them as best we can. We always seem to be looking ahead of the curve, five years ahead rather than behind, and which a lot of places just kind of put a Band-Aid to fix things. We need to keep moving forward and make Plainville attractive, as mentioned by some people earlier, to prospective homeowners and neighboring towns when it comes time for people to settle down and raise families, because that is our tax base. I used to nearly attend all the Board of Ed meetings last year, but because of teaching a night class, I haven't been able to, and I just started again. And if you go to them, continuing theme is always that Plainville rocks, and I think Plainville gets it right or is getting it right. And I think the Board of Ed should not monopolize this. It shouldn't be just applying to them because I think, in my opinion, all facets of our town services here are getting it right. So I'd like to thank, you know, Mr. Lee, Dr. Brummett, and their staff, and Board of Ed, Town Council for putting forth a reasonable, responsible, good budget that will not put excessive financial burden on the community, and I fully support it as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? Anybody else before we close? Joey, did you have your hand up?
No, I'm just telling her that it's cold down here.
Oh, sorry. Does anybody else wish to speak to the town council on the public hearing? Okay, well, I will close the public hearing, and I do thank all of you who came this evening for your comments. The council does need to hear from the community. This is one of the times where we do get feedback, so we appreciate your efforts coming here this evening, and thank you once again. Thank you. Moving on to the rest of our agenda, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to accept the minutes of February 22, 2017, regular meeting, and March 2, 2017, special meeting.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Announcements and reports? Does anybody have anything to report tonight?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Today I attended the Committee on Aging. Sean Cohen gave a very helpful presentation showing the committee, the connections that the Plainville Senior Center has with the federal and state governments and different departments, and also with regional agencies. And at the next meeting, the Committee on Aging will be talking about goals, objectives, and vision. It was very helpful and interesting. And then last Sunday, I did give the official Plainville welcome at the Special Olympics gymnastics competition. It's now been switched into the winter portion of the Special Olympics, and there were people there from throughout the state. I stayed for the whole event, and there were 22 athletes, a lot of family members, and many friends, all having a good time in Plainville last Sunday. Great event.
Good. Does anybody else have anything to report? Okay, moving on. Appointments and resignations. We have a few appointments to make tonight. Number one.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Hey, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the town manager's appointment of Jeffrey Semko, 18 Ashford Road, to the Conservation Commission for the term ending January 15, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Two more for the Conservation Commission.
Those are the new ones that came. Yes. Okay, I would make a motion to ratify the town manager's reappointment of Lisa Lozier to the Conservation Commission for the term ending January 15, 2021.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
A motion to ratify the town manager's reappointment of Randall Pass to the Conservation Commission for the term ending January 15, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any other appointments or reappointments to boards and commissions tonight? Okay, moving on. Next item that we'll be discussing is the report of the town manager, Mr. Lee.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of items. One is the school renovations discussion. A week ago, the Capital Projects Building Committee, the Board of Education, and the Town Council met to hear a presentation regarding the school renovation project. The school renovation project includes the replacement of a roof on the middle school, includes pavement replacement at the high school, and renovating like new Wheeler Elementary School. The total project cost is estimated to be $27,367,893 for all three projects. The estimated local share after state reimbursement is estimated at $13,953,620. This is an overall reimbursement rate for the three projects of 49%. The Wheeler School renovation is estimated to cost $23,513,789 with an expected net reimbursement rate of 51%. The middle school roof is estimated to cost $2,112,334 with a net reimbursement rate of 62%. The high school pavement project is expected to cost $1,741,769, and the project is not eligible for state grant reimbursement because it is considered a maintenance project. The net cost of the project, $13.9 million, can be absorbed within the town budget without increasing existing debt service line item. This can be accomplished because the debt service line item is decreasing over time. This can be accomplished because the debt service line item is decreasing over time due to the retirement of older projects that have been fully paid for. There is no doubt that the projects are, as proposed, need to be done. The Town Council has been aware of the need for quite some time and have planned to incorporate the new debt without having to increase the amount of money that is currently being devoted to long-term debt. The next step in the process is for the Board of Education to approve the project and to bring it forth to the Town Council. A referendum for the project is tentatively planned for Tuesday, June 6th. The next item I have is a resolution regarding the small cities application. A public hearing on the proposed, sorry about the spelling, small cities grant to make improvements to the housing authority's much-needed bathroom updates in 80 of the units at Centerview Manor and Woodmore Village was held on March 1st in the municipal center. Housing authority members attended the public hearing and to express their support for the project. The project would replace the existing bathtubs in these units with walk-in showers. There is an item under new business that would allow for the application to be submitted to the State Department of Housing. That's all I have to report. I'd like to turn it over to Scott, if you have some findings?
Yes.
And then be available for any questions you may have for us.
From the Plainville Coalition for Positive Youth Development, they will be presenting a discussion in forum on substance abuse in our families and our community on Thursday, April 6th, at 6:15 PM in the Plainville Middle School Auditorium at 150 Northwest Drive. The forum panel will present an overview of some of the current substance abuse-related topics and a discussion featuring state and local community leaders, persons in recovery, family members, and more. Panel members will share their knowledge, expertise, and personal stories regarding substance abuse, addiction, and recovery. Over at the Senior Center this month, they are having an informational meeting Tuesday, March 14th, at 9:00 AM, and this topic is for Run Your Way to 5K. And for those of you who do not know what a 5K is, it's a 3.1-mile race. They are going to be led by seasoned running coach Rich Dillian, who will be able to get you off your couch and able to run a 5K within 10 weeks. The program will culminate with the Amica Iron Horse Boulevard 5K Race in Simsbury on Sunday, June 4th. The training program officially begins on Tuesday, April 4th, at 9:00 AM, and will continue on Tuesdays until May 30th. Training sessions will leave from the Senior Center and will run through the Senior Center neighborhoods. Cost is $20, includes the training and a commemorative T-shirt. Please register for the informational meeting by contacting the Plainville Senior Center at 860-747-5728. And on Tuesday, March 21st, at 10:30 AM, they are having grandparents raising grandchildren. If you are a grandparent or relative who is raising a grandchild, niece or nephew, you are not alone. Millions of children are living in grandparent-headed households where the grandparents and relatives are responsible for the needs of the children. This group will share resources, ideas, the struggles, joys, and more with others who are raising grandchildren. Funding for the program is made possible in part of the Older Americans Act through the North Central Area Agency on Aging. Please call the Plainville Senior Center to register. And at the Public Works Departments, they are reminding residents that bulk pickup will be starting shortly. The bulk collection for 2017 will take place Mondays during the following periods between April 17th and June 26th. It will exclude Monday, May 29th for the holiday. They will pick up that Tuesday on May 30th. It will continue with the fall bulk collection on September 11th and run through October 30th. Eligible residents must call CWPM at 860-793-6721 to schedule a pickup. When calling, please provide your name, address, phone number, and a complete description of the items to be collected. Calls placed by 3:00 PM on Friday can be scheduled for collection on Mondays. Please note, pickups must be scheduled by the property owners. Bulk items should be placed curbside no more than 24 hours before your scheduled pickup. Bulk items must not block or create a safety concern for sidewalks or driveways. And they also have the hazardous waste collection schedule available. And April 22nd, they will be collecting hazardous waste behind the Plymouth Town Hall at 80 Main Street, Terryville. And on May 6th, the Plainville Highway Garage will be collecting hazardous waste material, and that is located at the end of Granger Lane. All residents who are looking to dispose of their hazardous waste are required to bring a photo ID when attending any of those locations. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the town manager or for Scott with their reports? Comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is public comment. During this section, we welcome the public to speak to the council. You'll be given three minutes. Please come to the podium with the microphone and state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak to the council?
Gail Black, Forest NC Avenue. I'm just curious if anything's happening, or maybe I've missed it, maybe I missed the minutes, with the water in town? Checking the water?
There aren't any developments. The town manager met with the water company representatives from the state, and we're waiting some information to get back from them. Do we have a date or timeline into when that's going to happen?
Well, staff has met with the Department of Health. They've identified the, where they want to take samples, and I think the Department of Public Health is, is trying to decide, you know, the parameters of the, of the testing. So, the actual samples have not been taken yet. It's, there's been, you know, somewhat of a delay at the Department of Public Health. So, I don't have a timeline at this point.
Okay.
But I think it's going to happen relatively shortly in terms of taking the samples and then sitting down and analyzing it and, and, you know, coming up with a, with a recommendation on how to proceed and then having a public information session. So, it, it looks like that's going to get slowed down a little bit, but, you know, we're trying to stay on top of it. But right now, it's, it's being, you know, we're waiting for the Department of Public Health to, to move forward with this.
Okay, because I think there's a lot of plumbing issues around, at least in our area, and they can't fix things because it, it just gets worse, you know? And I've been there a long time, so I've seen it go downhill. So, okay, regarding, and I never say it right, the park off of Cook Street.
Pateroski.
Yeah. Are we looking into that to see why the fish died and that kind of thing? I did send you an email, the guy from Lake Guard Improvement Association.
Right.
But are you, is anything going on? We hired somebody, didn't we, the town, I mean, to look into that?
We did, and they did issue a report. The fish were, the fish died because of the warm weather and the lack of oxygen in the pond. Not necessarily an unusual event, based upon the information we received from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. There is a work session that's scheduled before the next Town Council meeting with the Conservation Commission and Friends of Pateroski Pond to go over the suggested recommend, long-term recommendations, and some of which could be quite expensive, but if pursued, but the next step is, is that work session on, on the 20th.
Okay, I was reading the minutes in the inland wetlands, and now they want to put a pipe in to drain off the water off of Cook Street and have it drain into the pond. And so, you're going to get the chemicals that they're going to lay down when it snows going in there. And that seems like an oxymoron to try to help it if you're just going to put the chemicals in there.
Well, that has been looked at by the Inland Wetlands Commission, and they feel that there is not a major impact to the Pateroski Pond based upon the information that they, that they're, they're the ones who determine that, so.
I know, but that just, they don't sound like they're pro-environment. That's just my opinion.
Well, you should, you should attend the Inland Wetlands Commission on a regular basis, perhaps talk to them, because I can, I can guarantee you that they are very pro-environment.
I don't know. I guess. We all have our own ways of looking at the environment. I, I just, I don't know. I look at the environment before I look at the humans, what's happening with them, so I'm probably stricter.
But we also have a lack of water going into that pond as well to feed, to feed the pond, so, you know, there's, there's.
So, I can talk to them and see if they're going to have some kind of filter or something.
Well, there is. There's a, there'll be a plunge pond there, there's going to be, there's going to be oil-water separator. There's, there's, there's going to be elements of that which, which will reduce, you know, what goes into the pond.
Okay, because that stuff, like, it eats your car, so I can't imagine, you know? I've had to do a lot of research on environmental for my job, so I see, I see the stuff, and, like, PCVs are all over, all that stuff, so, all right. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair? Yes.
If I may, I just wanted to mention that I believe the, the Cook Street catch basin is going to be on the agenda for inland wetlands on April 5th.
No, they approved, they approved it.
They did approve it? Okay, I thought they were going to have another, last night at the Conservation Commission, it was mentioned about April 5th?
I don't know.
Okay.
They approved it last week.
Going back to them, from what I heard last night.
Well, there's some discussion about moving it from one side of the property to the other side of the property.
That's, that's what's going to be discussed, yeah.
But it's really just a, a, a location issue, not necessarily whether it should go into the pond.
But they are, so they are going to be continuing that discussion on the change on April 5th.
The change has not been finalized, but if it, if it does get finalized, then it will go to wetlands, yes.
They will be discussing that.
Yes.
All set?
All set.
Okay, Joanne, I failed to call on you. Did you want to still speak?
Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street. I'll start with the prayer, because I know you don't like it. And of course, it doesn't become, it doesn't come at the beginning. Oh dear God, our heavenly Father, please grant our Town Council the wisdom, knowledge, strength, and courage to perform their elected duties and responsibilities to the citizens and charter of Plainville. I have two questions here tonight. One is, what is the status of somebody, a company, somebody taking charge of looking at the old town hall as to the needs of what should be put on the bricks? Those are 100-year-old bricks. There is no protective coating. I heard recently, it was on the radar, so I'm just curious as to where this project stands. Has a company been, been called?
I don't have an update on that for you.
Is it possible to get some kind of an update in writing as to who's working on it and where it stands?
We can check into that for you.
Yeah, I'd like to know.
Okay.
I want that, you know, there's so much emphasis on the schools. You want to spend 20, almost $28 million on, on three schools. The parking lot over at the high school, I've been over there, it's tired, but it, it just seems very unnecessary to spend almost $2 million on, on pavement over there. It's, it's, what a waste of money. And probably to put a protective coating on the 100-year-old bricks of the old town hall, which is the historical center, housing our treasures, probably would be, what? A few hundred dollars, maybe a few thousand dollars? That's pittance. That's a you-know-what in the snow. So, I would hope that something is going to be done this spring. Nancy's been waiting a long time. No matter what is said about Nancy not caring, Nancy does care. I happen to know that. So, and I don't want to hear anything that she's not concerned, because I'll question that. And, um...
Time has expired, Joanne.
Well, I have one more quick thing, and that is what's happening to the bubbling track? Who's going to be responsible for the replacement of that? What is it going to cost?
The town is still negotiating some of those items. We don't have a final answer on that.
Nothing is, nothing's in the paper. I haven't seen anything.
There's nothing new to report right now.
Oh, nothing.
But it's in the works.
And then all of a sudden, what is it? The taxpayers are going to hear, oh, big time, we're responsible? I don't, I hope not. I hope not.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that hasn't spoken?
John Kissleck, 65 Forest Hill Avenue. At last meeting, I talked to, after the meeting, I talked to the Board of Education Chairwoman, Andrea Saunders, and she wanted me to make it clear that she was not the chairman of Board of Education and wanted me removed from the building committee. So, I want you to know, she was not. Tonight, she asked me if I was sick, not feeling well, because I didn't speak on Board of Ed budget. Well, I was looking at it tonight, and, you know, my big thing on it was capital improvements, but I saw that town manager made a pretty good chop in them, so I didn't really have anything to say. No, it's, it's tough. It's going to be a tough year to do this budget. Nobody's going to be happy with tax increases. And, and one of the problems I have is their revaluation. I mean, they were not fair with the people, you know? It's just ridiculous how, how they decide in one, one area or something, houses go down 10,000, another they go up 17,000. It's just, it's not fair, and that's, no matter what happens with this budget, it's going to hurt some people quite a bit. And the other thing for Wheeler School, and I realize what town manager's saying, that when we put this back into general fund or debt service, it's not going to increase. But if we were to do projects for 5 million less, then we would cut that debt service, and maybe we would have some money for some other things. So, you know, you don't have to just keep on doing this and staying even and doing the $4 million a year or whatever it is. We can reduce it, then the money could be used for a few other things. That's my way of thinking. And to go back to the Board of Education, last meeting, when I, I was blaming everything on the Board of Ed, I, I used the wrong terminology. The town manager says I'm throwing them under the bus. It should have been the Department of Education, because it, it's probably them and committees that they have that come up with these ideas for these projects, always wanting so much. And I used the wrong, it wasn't the members of the Board of Ed, it's, it's whoever decides these. They're on it, it gets thrown in their lap, and then they run with it, then you have to run with it, and a building committee. But I wish they would stop some of this stuff. I mean, I can see upkeep in that, but when, when you're talking $27 million, I mean, it's getting out of line, especially when, what I've been telling you, I feel a project that Wheeler can give them everything they need for safety and health and all the improvements, everything. You probably have the paperwork on it for $5 million less. Why do we have to go for a super job? Why can't we do that? It's going to last, it's going to be just as good. I, I just don't understand why they want so much. They have to give us a break on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Anybody else? Okay, thank you for your comments. Old business, we'll move on to our new business.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the location of the Gold Star Memorial Monument in Veterans Park as recommended by the Gold Star Committee.
Second. A motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled Resolution Authorizing Application for Historic Preservation Grant.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any comments or corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled Resolution Regarding Connecticut Small Cities Community Development Grant Program.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, number four.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the revised...
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the revised addendum.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have any other items of interest for discussion?
No other items.
Okay, thanks very much. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.